Minecraft Colonies. And this is a creative challenge. I am not playing in Survivor. And as a matter of fact, right now, I'm going to do something really interesting. I want to go out to a field out here. And I'm going to look at some different, some different builds that you can make in Minecraft. And that is inspired by watching some others. I need a little bit of flat land or flattish land. So that's what I'm looking for right now. I have a New Mambasa guide there. Oh yeah, this area. I would love to build another village right here. A different village. But right now, I am trying to look at... Oh, and that would be an interesting thing to do. Because see this river right here? Wouldn't it be neat? Let's follow this river all the way back. So this river goes here, here, here. And all the way around like this. And look what we've got. And then around this way. And let's see if this river ends up back. Nope, it doesn't. We'd have to go through the swamp. Have a canal through the swamp to here. Greetings! I'm looking at the river that runs through Numaseque. And sure enough, there it is, right there. So we'd have to clear out a path through the swamp to get to this new land over here. If we were going to, if we were, IF we were going to do something like that. So not that river. We'd go, we'd use that as a landmark. Come around this way. Take these trees away. Come around through here. Come this way. Past these mountains. And we'd come all the way around the river like this. Oh, that might be a problem. The waterfall, did I not see that waterfall on the way? I didn't. Alright, so I might not want to have that particular waterfall. I think it's one source. It is. And we could take that away so that we could have this land. I just love this landmark right here. I love that. But I'm just, the real reason I came over here was to find someplace flat. And if I filled this in, this would be flat enough. But I don't have to do that. I can come right here where this water is. Let's sleep. And the only reason I'm sleeping is because I want some light. So to look at what we're, what we're going to look at. I want to look at some places. One of the things I want to look at is in decorations. Which we can do this right here. Let's look at decorations for a minute. Here we go. And look at the bridges. That's what I want to see. So we have some bridge. So that says it's a bridge ground column in Acacia. Whoa! I'm gonna have to come all the way up. And there, oh, that's nice. So that looks like they're making actual waterways, which might actually be good in some of the areas that I'm looking at. So that is fascinating. Look at that. Bridge canal, corner, and intersections. Because Acacia, they're making it like you can make Venice in Acacia, which would be fascinating actually. And a waterfall, which is on the other side. Let's look and see what it looks like. There it is. That is really cool. Okay, and then those are, ah, rail bridge. And that is a fancy field. Interesting, a fancy field with that building and the water. So the water is coming in. So there's another Acacia fancy field. And a fork and a path. There's all the paths. And straight junctions, rail. Nice. Nice to know. And rail hills. Let's go back to that other rail hill and turn it around. I just want to see, look at all this. Wouldn't that be interesting? A rail stop right there. And straights and a tunnel corner, tunnel entrance and tunnel straights. Spectacular. And there is Acacia storage, seriously? Huh, let's look at this for just a minute. I'm gonna rise this up for a minute just so that I can get down. Let's get down for a minute and look. So I'm looking at all of this. Ah, look at the bins. So those bins for Acacia storage, fascinating. Alright, and then we get into birch. Now that's birch wall. So birch, I'm not so much interested in right now. Dark oak, I am. So there's treehouse ground stairs. And I know that they have a bunch of things for walking around. And their fields and the fancy field. I will show you right here. And then, uh, three and floating stairs. Wait, what do you mean floating stairs? Floating stairs? Huh, I'll have to look at that. Intersections and straight walks and junctions. Oh, okay, so that's all in dark oak and dwarven. I'm not doing basic fields. And then the cactus farm and the fancy field, which is what I'm using in New Mambasa on the ground. Netherwarick farm, sugarcane, basic field and hut blocks, markets, yes. And then the miscellaneous, so the beach, the gazebo, the fountain. And there's the stable, which is one of the things I want to build over on the, in this area here. I think I definitely want to put a stable in. Oops, I'm not down, not down enough. There we go. Because that's actually quite cool looking. And looks big enough. That's nice, I like that. Okay, and, uh, let's see. So that's miscellaneous town library, which is not the same as a school. Now that's an actual library. And, oh well, if you want. And back to the beach and parks, yes. The big monster mage park right here. Monster! Look at that thing, it's gorgeous though. And then, um, that's the hedge park. And then an ice rink. And that is ivy-covered benches. And I'm gonna come down so you can see. That's so cute, benches. Okay, and playground, which is what this is. Which is very sweet. That's very nice. And then playset. Volleyball court and back to the mage, okay. Ships. And I'm going to push this out for a minute and turn this around so that we can actually see them. And there's the water right there. So this is the large pirate ship, if I'm not mistaken, yes. And then the medium pirate ship and the small pirate ship. So you could have ships all along your waterway. And I like that. And these are built by the colonists. So, and so let's continue for a minute. Space Wars, I'm not gonna be able to do. And we've seen statues before, statues, arms raised. I think that statue, there it is, is down too far. Let's turn it this way. And so we know that at Numaseque we have Poseidon, but we have turned Poseidon into, um, Yamaya. So the mermaid and statue present and staff and shield. And wait, interesting, interesting, okay. So there's some more. And this is Taiga. And let me look, oh no, what I just did. Alright, I'm going to have to go and erase it in just a minute. But, because they're gonna, because he's gonna try. Where are you? So there's our strange new place. Let's go to City Hall right quick. Because I put that down, he's gonna try and come here and build it when he gets done building what he's building. See, we're not that far away, isn't that interesting? From there, we could have a waterway come. But I'd like it to come all the way around and through to here. But maybe it should come through to here. Maybe we should use the Acacia pieces and build, um, yeah, I know, I have to get them. And build, uh, yeah, because look at this. The waterway could still continue out if we use the Acacia to build a canal through this part right here. Now that would be something now, wouldn't it? That would indeed. Or we could just do it simply and bring it around here, which is what would happen in real life. But even here, look, we'd still have to have a canal right here to get through this part. So let's go to City Hall and turn off, cancel. And, and it took me the longest time to discover on my own, without researching, that this is what would happen if you make a mistake like that. Turn that off. So Jerome is working on the builder, the builder's hut for the second builder. And he needs some things. And let's give him some of the things. Because we're in creative, we can give him all of the things that he needs right away. And go back. And so I don't have to go up quite that far. I was looking. And when I was doing this, I was like going, oh, let me go way out. This area right here is big enough for me to put some, some places on to look at. Look at our horses, aren't they gorgeous? We're gonna have fun having horses. So when we get the night prayers, we will just take a nap right quick. There we go. And yes, technically, because I'm in creative, I don't have to technically, because I'm in creative, I could actually. Um, so let's go back to here. I could actually just have, have, but they won't work. Jerome won't work at night and I don't blame him. So without doing this again, let's go to decorations. And we were at Taiga for a minute. Space Wars, Taiga. So Taiga has a bunch of walls that might be good for different types of walking or different types of, of, of being. These are obviously supposed to be, yes, guard towers, guard walls. And that's corner, this is the monster gate. That is the Taiga gate. Which is pretty intense, that would be amazing to build. So that's something there. And then let's look again. At, so that's, I think that's decoration. The hammer statue, yes. Intersections and the market, which has a helmet in it that still can't be made. So I'm going to have to wait until the next iteration of it. Because that helmet keeps it from being made. And I can research that helmet now and see if maybe that's been changed, but I don't think so. And because I have that market in New Mambasa and it is not working. So messy road, messy roads, Palisade corner wall. Now that is nice, isn't it? And Palisade gate wall. That is so cool. Let's see something here. That is really interesting, okay. Palisade straights and then the Taiga stair walls and the straight. I'll turn that. So that's the straight wall. And then the double cap, interesting. And then a different wall gate. This is the wall gate that opens, the Taiga wall gate that opens. Wow, look at that thing. That's amazing. And then the single cap, straights. And then this giant wall. And tower walls. And I think I'm back, yep, I'm back to the other gate. Now this is the original gate. And it looks like when they did the update in April, they added a gate that actually worked, which is super cool. This is beautiful. But the other gate actually works, which is amazing. Is that water? Is that a waterfall? It looks like it. I wonder if that, that's interesting, isn't it? I don't see anything, but that gate might actually work also. So, so I'm doing a tour. And the reason I'm doing this tour was because I was actually looking for bridges. So this is infrastructure and there we have our first bridge. So here's one of the bridges, but it looks like there might be some others. That's a basic bridge. There's a border block. And a fancy lamppost and nice lamppost. And I should take away this so you can see right quick. Yes, that's a nice lamppost. And that's the fancy lamppost. And then this is the bridge that I wanted to look at. Now they have this bridge like this. And this bridge is actually, would actually work for us. And what we could actually do is have them build the bridge like this and then trade out the wood for dark oak or jungle if we wanted to. Because look at that, is that gorgeous? Yeah, so we could actually, instead of having this boring, um, crossways like this, we could actually have that be bridge right there. That is short enough for that bridge to be built. So I could actually have, and I've done this in the past, I could actually have all four of them be builders in the beginning and then get more people afterwards. Um, and by doing that, I could have one person who is building housing, one person who's building bridges and one person who's doing like craft, like the craftsmen shops, like the businesses. And that's only three. And one person, what, running the restaurant? One person running a restaurant to feed them? I could do it that way. That would be interesting. Um, but I'd actually need two people doing businesses. One person doing like farms and farmhouse and other people doing like restaurant, fishing and all of that. So four people, four builders. So if we did four builders, this is me completely changing what I decided to do. So we have a builder here. And I think this builder is going to be the bridge builder. They're going to be, build the bridge. They're going to make the canal through this area here to have the waterway go straight through. Although I don't know about that because it almost seems like we should have a port area here and have the waterway just go right straight through, right straight through this way. And around here, of course, right straight through around. And see there's, or straight, let's see. I see the bridge over there. Right straight through. So that's a landmark right there where the river turns. So they could actually follow this side. And we'll look at the swamp. And so yeah, you could build, see, you could build a canal right through here. Right there. And come to, around here to this way. Have the ship come around here. And now you could either have a canal here to cut out this loop, but they wouldn't do that in real life. They'd just go ahead and take this loop around, all the way around. Or, because see where that bridge is? Or, and then just do this area here. And I'm gonna do this right now. I'm going to fill this right here. I need just a plain piece of stone. There we go, to fill this, to change this waterfall. Right here, there we go. That is right on, you heard the water objecting, brrr. Change that because look at that. I so want to have a community right here with that as the view. So the water's gonna come down and go down here. So yeah, so we could do waterway all the way. But right here, and look at this, right here is the other side of us. So we don't even have to do that. We could do train station all the way over to here. So we could have both. That's a lot to do. That's like working on this place for a really long time. Like Wells Knight had kingdoms. I don't know if you know that, um, if you've watched him. But he had kingdoms, which he's had, it sounds like for years. And I can understand how now. But what I want is to have a peopled village that I use in that same kind of way. Hi Jerome. Alright, so we do have, um, so he's working on this and we'll have him figure out how he's getting across. He has two ways across to work on this here. And he is working on it because, look at that. This whole entire ground part is finished. If he's gone back, he might need a shovel or something. And now that he's a level five, we can give him diamond. But let's see what it says here. He needs fence, let's give him that. That might, he might have been waiting for it before. And, but I want to do the inventory. He has a diamond shovel. These two right here, I wanted to get him diamond pickaxe and a diamond axe. No one's gonna take it away right now because, um, because of this, because of where he is. Let's take these two out. He doesn't need these. And let's put them right in here. Okay, let's go here and get diamond. Let's get a pickaxe, a shovel and an axe. So that he has everything that he needs right now. Inventory and we'll put them right here. Okay. So because, um, because this is up, I can see this right here. And I'm going to dig this, I'm going to, I can't get it. So where is it in the ground? How do I get that to go away? See that right there? I don't know that I can hit that in some kind of way and get that to go away. Alright, so let's repair this. Let's get some dirt. Let's get some oak. And the, the door is right there. Okay, and let's put the oak in here. I wish I could get rid of that, but I don't think that I can. Judging from the fact that I just tried and I can't. But we'll see if maybe it did get rid of it there. Alright, um, I'm gonna go around and see if I can find some of those. Because those actually, it seems like they're good somehow. Yay, look at him working so fast. Alright, back to here, back to where we were. Back to where we were while he's doing that. So look at this. So we could do bridges. And I could have one builder just working on bridges. And I think I would like to do that, I think I would. So in this area right here, where we have this, um, we can make these bridges. Let's see how big. So let's get this. Um, we don't have to move it. Let's click on it, click on it and let's escape from there. I want to see how big the small boats are on this water. So let's put one right here. So what I'm trying to see is, so let's go to decorations. Let's go to supply camp, pillar walls. Let's go to supply cap, pillar walls, ships. There we go. Okay, let's escape. Let's come out. Let's come over. And so obviously we can't take one of these down the river. Let's turn this way. And let's go here. I wanna see what we can put on this river. Um, let's bring this down so that it's actually in the water. And that would put it right here. So there's a ship. So now let us, so he finished, okay. Now let us make this the smallest ship. So this is the smallest ship right here. Let's turn it this way. Let's turn it this way, yes. And let's look, let's come over here and let's raise it up. Oops, raise. So there's a small ship. So a small ship, will a small ship mass fit under this bridge? No, it will not. So it doesn't. So because of that, what would we do? We would have to have something that looked like a drawbridge. And so I believe, and let's X that, that these kind of look like they're drawbridges. So let's come out here and let's look at the bridge for a minute. Let's rise up. I think we can make it look like, so let's click on this and go to decorations and go this way to bridges or infrastructure, I think, yes. So there, turn that one around and I need this one, yes. So there are bridges that you can do. So what we could do is have, um, this on both sides. So that would be interesting to have that on both sides. And in this area, um, if we make it dark oak, we can have it come right out of City Hall. There and on this side here. And then have, um, yeah, I know, it doesn't make any sense for something this small, but I'm just trying to imagine that that would be when it's more than likely that they would just come here. And that these bridges here would just be crossing bridges, that they wouldn't. That coming back and forth between these two, they would just go through here, through here. And around here and then turn towards that and go this way and around this way. If we were going to do water and if we were going to do rail, which we have that whole rail system that they can actually build, we could do that. So a whole lot of planning, a lot of curious planning. So I'm going to, I'm going to, um, that's what I'm gonna think about. That's what I'm gonna do.